Um, we're gonna go ahead and open the class up and get started here, this is uh well past seven o'clock. Um, we have here. Na lehagish hakivoh. Na lehagish hakivoh.
Na lehagish hakivoh.
Yahua sefta tifta ufi yahgi. Tehilatika.
Yahua. Tifta. Tifta. Ugi. Yahgi. Tehilatika.
There you go. Ma yahua ve'afusu oi vechah ve'anusu misanehah mipnecha. Uma yahua ve'afusu oi vechah ve'anusu misanehah mipnecha. Uma yahua ve'afusu oi vechah ve'anusu misanehah mipnecha. N'haleluia?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Yahka.
Kuhakivoh le yah yahua yah kadosh Israel. Le avenu Adonenu Hamashiach. Le nasi kav, le sarav, le aturav, uli ko kasadi. Le alo shekerovim, alo she riko kin, shanaavakin bishmo. Ulle manu ani mivarech otzi kin shalom alech.
Lakum shalom.
It's very crucial that we hear it, you know, in real time, that way we can uh start to internalize it.
Okay.
You can't be afraid of it, you know?
Okay.
Well, you can be afraid of it, but it doesn't serve you any purpose to be afraid of it, I should say. Um, I definitely have come across some things that I'm afraid of. Um, which is also why I'm in this uh folder here today. Um, this is the uh Asas prayer. Uh, let me know if you could see it when it pulls up.
And the title of it, what prayer?
It's called, oh, it's really second chronicle seven fourteen, but it's called Asas prayer.
Awesome.
Um, this is the wrong one, it's one of the chronicles uh fourteen twenty fourteen. It's okay, I have it somewhere here.
Take your time.
Um, oh, I know what's going on, I know why this is not right, because it's the wrong folder, there we go, this is it right here. Um, lots of interesting things going on in this folder. I want to show you. There's another version of the divine salutation.
Hmm.
Boreum ko kuhakivoh le yah yahua yah kadosh Israel. Le avenu, right, le avenu.
Le avenu.
Adonenu. Bien ami Hamashiach. Le nasi kav. Le sarav. Le aturav. Ulko and or. Passidi. Ale alo shekerovim. Lo she riko kin. Shanaa, shenava kin. Bishmo. Ul. Lemanu ani mivarech. Otzi kin shalom alech. It's just enough, I've just written it another way.
It's a dare.
It's pretty much the same divine salutation that we've seen before. Um, but uh I have a lot of these little files where I've been doing some research and trying to study on my own. Um, there's a caveat, uh, let's see here, uh. Look at this here, this is very interesting, the colors. Hebrew adjectives.
Ha vayin?
We have uh. Swai, swain?
Swain.
Swain.
Swain. Shakor?
Well, so I think Thomas Sam is also.
Shakor?
Shakor.
First one's to you.
Tupac Shakor?
Okay, Shakor.
Shakor, there you go. That, that H is a guttural H, Shakor.
Shakor, Shakor.
Shakor.
Blue, blue is horrible. Chachol?
Chachol.
There you go. Chachol?
Chachol.
Brown is khum.
Khum.
Gray is four.
Four.
F four.
What's wrong with that? What is that? No, no, go get your mom. Uh, green is yarok.
Yarok.
Yarok, remember the rule for vav, right, whenever vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. So we have chachol, khum, or khom, right, afor, yarok.
Yarok.
Uh, thom, right? That rule for vav is very important to remember.
Uh, thom.
Sagol?
Sagol.
Red is adam.
Adam.
White is the name of Jacob's uh father-in-law, Levan, or Levan.
Levan, Levan. Levan.
Levan, yeah, you can say Levan, uh, yellow is zachov.
Zachov.
Let me go into sizes, look at this.
Okay.
Get the transliteration to help you with the Hebrew, because there is noneicu, right?
Adolim.
Mm-hmm.
Adol. Adolim?
Adolim.
Adolim, there you go, sizes. Mm-hmm. Uh, sizes is a plural word, right, Adolim, and then look at, look at big.
Adol.
Adol, see, so the context of, because, because bigs is not a word, right, B-I-G-S.
Hmm.
So, Adolim would be the word you use for sizes. Where, whereas gadol just means big, but it's the same word, just in different state. Deep. Amok. And that word deep, uh, what do you, what do you remember that word deep from?
Uh, the deep.
Yeah, let's see, let's see, it's the same word.
It's a dare.
Let's see if it's the same word, so that was what Genesis one?
Yeah.
So, and darkness was upon the face of the deep. Can I see if it's the same word? Can we, can we do it like that?
Yeah. Excellent.
Yeah. Official. Uh, word next to what is going on.
Here's the face, pani.
Okay, face, pani on the face.
In the face, yeah. I want to scroll down so I can give the answer, I want to see if we can, what is, what does this word here say?
Ta hom.
Ta hom, yeah, let's see.
Darkness.
Home, there's different words now.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Hey.
Right, bye. And find out.
The deep, the grave.
Hmm.
Still the mind. Right.
Interesting word there.
Mm-hmm. Amok. And thom.
Yeah. Whenever you. And then look for uh, Gannari.
Look at that, the root word, look at the root word.
Hmm.
To rank, rank again, to make a noise, to move, to destroy.
Hmm.
So, so, you know, people, people act like, you know, the deep is talking about water.
Okay.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
But. It might be, it might be a stupid question, but does water make noise? Not really, right? To distract, to make a great noise, to murmur, to roar, to disconcert, to discomfit, right? To stir. So, this, this deep that is talking about. In this verse, is not talking about water. Is talking about people.
Mm-hmm.
The earth was without form and void, and darkness was upon the face of the deep.
Hmm.
Now, let me show you something crazy. I'm gonna open another tab here, I'm gonna go to Jeremiah, chapter four. I'm gonna go to verse twenty-three, look at this. So my people is foolish, they have not known me, they are sodish children, and they have none understanding. They are wise to do evil, but to do good, they have no knowledge, take the verse twenty-three. And I beheld the earth, and lo, it was without form and void, and the heavens, and they had no light. Or, you could say, and darkness was upon the face of the deep.
Hmm.
The question that I'm, I'm posing to you ladies is this. Make sure nobody's trying to get into the class, let's, let's be sure, okay, here's the question I'm posing to you guys, to ladies.
Mm-hmm.
If this same language is being used in Jeremiah, chapter four, as is being used in Genesis, chapter one, verse two. The earth was without form and void, and, and the heavens had no light, or darkness was upon the face of the deep. And we understand that deep here is not talking about waters, or rivers, or oceans, or bodies of water, it's talking about humans. Then, we know that there were people around during Jeremiah's time, so why would Jeremiah use the same wording, or the same? Words, why would he use the same description in his time?
Because the people were acting the same way. I don't know.
No, you don't, that is the only logical answer. That there, something was going on that was so reminiscent of the time in Genesis one and two. That Jeremiah was, was able to use the same description, you understand?
Thanks.
Which, which one proves that there were people before Genesis one and two?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And it also validates the fact that without form and void is not a physical condition being described. But it is, it describes the spiritual state of a people.
Okay.
It is the people that are without form and void, and not the earth itself.
Hmm.
Does that, you follow?
Yeah.
It is the, it is the people that are without form and void, and not the earth itself. And so, because he was moving upon the face of the deep amongst all these people, and could not find. What he was looking for, right? He said, let there be light, so we're gonna jump down here real quick to twenty-six, and he says, and he said, let us make man in our image after our likeness. So, if the earth was without form, without what form? Without any form of godliness. After our likeness, void, void of what? Void of the spirit or attributes of God. So here in twenty-six, we have the antithesis of without form and void, which is in our image after our likeness. And, and we, and all of that comes from just understanding one little word, you know, just understanding that this word does not mean waters. That's, what, what, what are waters in Hebrew? Do you know what waters are?
No.
You don't know waters are in Hebrew?
Clouds.
There is myum, right?
Myum, there you go. A mine.
A mine.
The waters. Yeah, and we know from Revelation. You know, from Revelation, chapter seventeen, that the waters where the great whore siteth are representation of people. And nations, and multitudes, and tongues, so even again in this verse, the illusion of water is talking about people, and not actual bodies of water.
Okay. I've heard that clouds represented the people.
Clouds also in some instances represent people, yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Right, where were we? Let's see, we were right here, all right, all of them one word, amok.
Amok.
Amok. Here we have a long, larok. I had a long day, how would you say a long day?
Aruk.
Um.
Yom. Yom marok.
Yom marok.
Yom harok, yeah. Day the long, right, day the long, this is, yom ha arok. I would say I had a long day.
Don't know about the haves and has.
That's okay.
The chances.
How would you say, let me go back, how would you say my day was long?
Yom?
Yomi.
Uh. Okay.
I'll go with that, yom yarok, let's see. Very interesting little, uh. My day was long, let's see what it says.
Yom shalim.
Ayam shalim. He. Ayi arok.
Me.
I had a long day.
Hmm.
Now, now, this word here always kind of gives me trouble, right, because I don't like that word. So let's put that in Pielim real quick and see what that says.
Okay.
All right, let's see what that word says.
Mm-hmm.
Ayah.
Ayah.
He was, or it was.
Okay.
What was that advertisement?
Mm-hmm. Ayah.
Li.
E.
Yu liyot, lyot.
To be.
Ayah. Eighty. Eighty. We were, I was, we were, you were. You were feminine, what is that, what is you were feminine?
Hayit.
Hayit, yeah, hayit.
Hayit, hayit.
You were masculine, you were feminine. Hayita, eight, I was, eighty.
Yes, right. I've forgotten also. We were. Ayino.
Ten.
Ayino.
Ayino.
Look at this one here, you were feminine, you were feminine plural, hayten, hayteen?
Hayteen.
These are, these are important little word studies that we do, you know, to really just blow out some words and see what they say. So, we're, we're really saying it was, right? It was, ayah, right? The day, ayam, ayah, arok. Am I right? Ay, ayah, no, ayam shalim, the day of mine, ayam shalim, ayah arok. Or you could say it like this, ayali, right? The li is like shalim or la, la, right? The day of mine. Ayah li yom arok. Maybe we should, maybe we should write this down, right, because this would be a very good uh response if you uh. Let's, let's play with this a little bit more, let's say. Did you have a long day? Look at that. A'im ayah la yom arok. A'im ayah la yom arok. Did you have a long day?
All right, help, help us with this setting up sentences in the right order, the words, how they should be set up. Subject verb. How do we do this?
Um, the, the subject is what, the day?
The day. Ayon.
Right, ayon. The verb is. Uh, to have, right, or it was, which is ayah. And arok is an adjective.
Hello.
And, and shalim is just a, a possessive. Um, pronoun. So, the day of mine, or my day, right? My day was long.
Thank you. Okay.
My day was long, and, and this is just another way of saying the same thing. Right, now, now, let me show you this here, I'm, I'm gonna show you this here, this is always a point of confusion as well. The li, let me show you, we're gonna go to the conversion, and we're gonna blow this out, so we can see what it is really doing.
Okay.
So you're saying what? It's indicating possession. With yes. And aim, right? Yes and aim, forget the le, because we're not doing le, right? Look at this.
That was a bit fast for me. Go back. Indicating possession with.
Indicating possession, right, yesli, or aimli, right? Yes, aiming to have, or there is, there is, there isn't, yesli or aimli, right?
Right, okay.
So we have. Yesli is to me. Lanu is to us, yes lanu. Yes lacha.
Mm-hmm.
Yes la.
Thank you.
Yes lahim.
Yes lahim.
It's lahinn.
Lahinn.
We have yes lahinn, remember that, the difference is the, the chaf and the hey. Lahinn, lahinn, lahim, lahim. La, la, and la, yes la, her, so. What this is saying, right, it says yesli, let's, let's look at what it says where yesli. Uh, ayah li, right? Was to me day long. Right, was to me day long. And there, there's a, there's a certain level of memorization.
Mm-hmm.
You have to kind of, yeah, there's certain, because the, the, otherwise, we have to go over like these rules, right? So, um, in conversational Hebrew, if you, if you just say, for instance, if you say, uh. Um. Well, yom arok, ayam arok. Right? They're gonna know what you're saying. Day was long. Ayam arok, right, watch this, if I were to switch this over, and I'm gonna go. Like this, gonna go to my, uh, handy dandy Hebrew calculator. Y'all see my Hebrew calculator, my Hebrew typewriter?
Hey.
Okay. So watch this, we're gonna go to Hebrew. Now, we say. Ha, oh wait, I'm sorry, right here, ha yom. Ha ro. The day is long, see? Let's see if we, let's chop it up, shalim. My day was long, ayon arok shalim, my day was long, that's how I would have said it.
Ayon. Okay.
So, nobody, and, and see, and look what they do here, they call it Yiddish, because Yiddish is a. For lack of a better term, Yiddish is a bastardization of Hebrew based on dramatic language and dramatic, uh, pretext, right? My, my wife is from Kenya, and they speak Swahili, and they have a saying in Kenya, it says this. She, she's, she's always trying to teach me Swahili, but she says, you don't wanna learn Kenyan Swahili, because Kenyans don't speak good Swahili, they speak slang. And the saying in East Africa is this. Swahili was born in Tanzania, and died in Kenya, and he was buried in Uganda. You gather, so, so, she doesn't wanna teach me the Kenyan Swahili, because it's not pure Swahili, it's more of a slang. Mixed with other languages and other words, so, our Hebrew is going to be like that until somebody corrects us. And there's nothing wrong with embracing that you're gonna speak it incorrectly. Because at least you're speaking it, think about your, think about your child when he was a baby, or when she was a baby, how they spoke English. And how they were, my little girl was in third grade before she stopped saying, her hit me. It's not her hit you, it's she hit me.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying? So. So. So we. I know because we're adults, and we, we're, we're perfectionists, and we wanna be fluent and articulate, that we, we wanna, we think we can skip past. Ages two and three and four and five, and we can't. So if, if that means that we have to just struggle with some Hebrew. And, and, and get it wrong, then I'd say we, we struggle with it and get it wrong, because eventually, we're going to. Eventually, we're going to get it right.
Okay.
So sheli should be at the end of that sentence? Just represent my.
Let's see what happens if you put it at the beginning of it. See. Uh, we're gonna go back to the calculator, the keyboard. Now, we're gonna say. Uh. Hayam. Sheli. Aruch. Same thing. And, and, and it causes Yiddish.
Okay.
Cause he knows it's not proper. Right? Hayam sheli aruch. The day that was to be was long.
Like, I asked because I remember once in, um. Class with Koheng Mikael, he said. We have to work on learning to think Hebrew. And I, I took it to mean the right, how to. Pronounce, how to say in the proper order. Or whichever, I don't know which is the proper order. I really don't know how to think Hebrew.
And, and, and I'm gonna tell you, um, everybody has their own interpolation of what it means in Hebrew, right? Cause I've even said Hebrew thought, right? Um. So, to, to every professor. It means, it, it, it means its own thing, it takes on its own life. But. Um, also. The, the main, the main thing is understanding that you don't need a word for word translation. And in the same way, we, we learned proper English, and we still spoke Yabonics, sometimes, good communication is not good grammar.
Excuse me one minute, my husband had an accident. Let me go check this out.
My son is over here going through the kitchen, I used to cook something. Oh, what are you cooking? Alright, I'll get it. Get back. We can put this back on here so we can, uh. So we can, uh, see what it's, what it's. What it's gonna give us, right? We said, my day was long. I had a long day. Uh. Did you have a long day? Here's that, uh, the did, I'm gonna blow that out one time too. Did, copy. We're gonna put that here. Look at, look at this word real quick. And see what it tells us. Aime.
Aime, okay.
Aime. So we're gonna keep on this one. And, and that's. These are the kind of words in Hebrew. That I like. Listen to this call, when it's called, the, you know, the African Union as well. Give me one second, guys.
Okay.
I'm not, I, um. I have to be polite, but I came to make it to the airport.
Aime, it's, it's one word, nothing to blow out, so that's all, I like those, there's just memorization. Aime. So it says here. Aime higher. Lah. Right? To him, to, to me, or to you. Bah, young aruch. And, and the good thing about this is, you could, uh. My plate is full. I've had a, a good time enjoying myself, though, thank you. That, that call is gonna end in a second, I'm glad, cause they've been on for two hours. Uh, almost three hours. And I'm working with the African Union, and so that is the African Union on the, on the other Zoom channel. So, I'm looking at the colors right now. How would you say? I'm feeling blue today? I am blue today. Is, uh, Koke Nalo back? I don't know if she's back.
I'm back. Yes, I'm back.
Everything okay? He has all his singers?
Bloody two of mine.
Oh my goodness.
I'll be back.
Say, I am blue today. Uh, Koke Sandra.
Um. Is it yes lee? Oh, I wanted, I wanna say it like, I'm trying to do it like English, so it's, okay, um.
I think that you would start with yes lee, why yes lee?
I don't know, uh, that's the first thing came to my mind.
Okay, okay, so yes lee, what?
Um. Uh, hayam. Hakol.
Okay. Yes lee, hayam hakol? Maybe? Let's, uh, let's put that in and translate and see what we get. Leave this up, for most part, so we can see. Um, on, on board keyboard, okay, so we said. Said. Yes. Lee. Uh-oh. I'm sorry, I'm doing this wrong. Let's back out of this. And we're gonna go here, and we're going to swap this over. Swap that over, okay, here we go, alright, now, we're gonna try it, alright. You said yes. Lee. Now you can kinda see. Right, what's going on here, right? Yes lee would be, to me, would be the wrong, would be the wrong, uh. And be the wrong pronoun, right? The wrong possessive, right? Yes lee. Hayam. Uh, or. Did I, did I, did I use the wrong one?
Oh, or did I say it wrong?
Yeah, no, 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 I spelled it wrong. I, I used, I used the wrong thing. Uh. Okay, right here. It's supposed to be like this. And I'm blue today? So, maybe I would, I would go with. Right? Ani, right? Ani hayam hakol. See that?
Hey.
I can't look today. You know. I need.
Hayam hakol. I'm blue today? Or maybe you could either say without. Uh, the hayam, right? I'm blue? Ani hakol. And then. Uh. Let's see if we can say maybe. Zeh. I blew it, look at that, I blew it. No, I, I would say maybe ani hakol, or ani hakol. Hayam. Right? I'm blue today. I don't see anything wrong with that. Uh, Koke Nalo, you back with this?
King, did I miss a word for feeling?
Oh, so, we did not put feeling in there, because we haven't gone over feeling, let's, let's see what feeling. Let's see what feeling is in Hebrew. For that, I'm gonna go to, uh. I'm gonna go to another website. Only because I don't wanna rely solely on Translate, and I don't wanna rely solely on PLN, right? I wanna get a, I wanna get a, a, a broad reach, so let's, let's go to reverse. Contextal. Reverse or context, okay? Uh. Don't block my, okay, there you go. Alright, so now we're gonna go to Hebrew. And we're gonna type in here. Uh, feeling. I'm feeling. And it says what?
I need. The. Merghish.
Me, me, uh, dish. Meraghish? You, you like that word, meraghish? Smearaghish?
Merghish.
I'm feeling. Let's, uh. Feeling. Ani.
Merghish.
Ani merghish.
I feel, I'm feeling, I can feel.
Ani merghish. Ani merghish. Ani merghish. Ani merghish. Hakol, hayam, right? Let's, let's go back. Ani. And then he said. Marghish.
Marghish.
Ani.
Marghish.
Uh, where's the M? Mar. Dis. I feel blue today?
Cool. Hayam.
You know, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, um. It's good to know a lot of nouns, like what is chair, what is bed, what is refrigerator, what is spoon, what is dog, what is horse? What is car, what is pencil, what is computer, all those things are great, but, um, if you don't know some adjectives. If you don't know some adjectives, then there's no way for you to really express those nouns. Because you think about it in English, every time you say a noun, we know a noun, or a common noun, person, place, thing, or idea. Anytime you're expressing now, or you say it now, you, 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 you express that noun with an adjective. So, let's, let's go through the adjectives real quick, so you can see. Right? The colors are adjectives. Okay? Then we have, the sizes are adjectives, right? Big, deep, long, narrow, short, small, tall, thick, thin, wide. Then we have the shapes, these are also adjectives. See that? Then we have tastes, these are adjectives. Look at that word. Te amima, te amin. Te amin.
Te amin.
Bitter, is mar, fresh. Tari. Salty. Sour. Yeah. Malukha.
Malukha.
Malu. Maluk.
Maluk.
Let's put that in the, in the thing, that's a crazy one there. Copy. Let's see what that says, let's look at that one. Say. Maluach.
Maluach.
Maluach. Which is salty. Now. I'm curious now to see if this is the same word that was used when, uh, what's his face's wife turned to salt. Lots. Wife. Pillar of salt. That was. K J V. Uh-oh. Caps lock. K J V, the ca, caps lock, uh, uh, negates my Hebrew calendar, Hebrew keyboard. Genesis nineteen twenty-six. So let's go there. Uh. Blue Letter Bible. Genesis nineteen, Jan nineteen. In verse twenty-six. Let's see what it says. But she looked back and turned to a pillar of salt. Now, before we look at it and thing, let's see if we can find it in this, uh. Ish, ish, ish ti, right? His wife? Ish ti, ish ish to. Right? Ish to. His wife. Cause, cause it, it's wife, isha, but it's his wife, so ish to.
Ish to, okay.
Right? Regular wife would be isha, but this is ish to. Right? There. Va. Tang. Bates, va, batavet? Batavet? Let me see what it says. Batavet? Ish to. Me, ah. Karu. Me akarat. Me akarav. Me akarav, yeah, right, me akarav. Uh. Va. Ta, va, te. I, va te hi. Va, ti. Right? The, uh, the, the shavam means stop right there, so it'd be vat. Ti, va, ti. Uh. Ne. Si, neziv. Mila. And it says salt, melach. Now let's see if that's the same as, uh, this word.
Salty.
It is. You see the root word? So this is the same word right here. Melach. Melach. Melach is the same word as. Meluach. Meluach. It has the same. It has the same root words. You have the meme, the mem, the lamed, and the chetz. Mem lamed chetz, and here you have. Mem lamed hef. So me, me luach. This is wrong here, this is, this should be. Me lu. Uh. This should be me lu. Ah, like that, me luach. Me luach, sour. Chimot, chimot. Now you see how, even though this is a chetz, it's gonna make the H sound, not the KH sound. Chimots. Spicy. Harif. Harif, or harif. Sweet. Matok. This is also, uh, there's a, there's a song, it goes, matok, 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 like it's sweet, it's sweet, zeh matok, it's sweet. Right? I don't know. Oh, I, I just got a good idea, look at this, so we're, we're still dealing with Hebrew, right, I'm gonna go back over to the English side. And let's say we were at the store, right, and, or we're somewhere, and. A coat Nilo picks up an apple, and she bites into the apple. How would you ask her? How the apple tastes? How would you say hello?
Oh, can you use ma? I'll taste the apple.
Tyne, you remember how we were talking about taste here, and we have, uh, taste is. Tyne, tyne mean. The, the root word, the root word is, is tet, Iain, mem, right, here we have it again. Tet, Iain mean, right? Hatami, hatayin, shell, hatapula.
You said ehk?
Yes, ma. Let's, uh, let's talk about it real quick, so we know. This is a important word here to remember. We're gonna, I'm gonna put these on the, on the chat too, so we can go over them some more, there you go, ehk. Which is how. And it's only one thing to remember, ehk. Or you might even say eh, eh, right? But once you say it fast, it might as well care if you say ehk or ehk, right? When we, we, we use this, we use this already before, when you say, what do you call, how are you called, right? Eh, la rin, right, how are you called? Corine, eh, Corine, how are you called? Corine lah. Right, we use lah already too, eh, Corine lah. What is your name, how do they call you? How do they read you? Corine lah, how do they read you? Or you say eh, Corine lahim, what are your names? So, some good words here to look at, we have. Haya is a good word to look at, to study some more, we have the, the lah. Right, and then we have the haim, and then we have also the ehk, what is this? Oh, this is just salty, that's just a little. Search there, but, uh, so you would say. Which is how. Hatayin, the taste. Hell, that belongs to, right? Hatapua, the apple. Ah, ta, puah. But have y'all, have y'all ever seen, uh, the word apple before in, uh, in Hebrew? Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna blow it out some too, I want you to see what it is, it should be just one word. There we go. Ta. The last one is weird, cause it's like that, that come, at the talk is under the chet, tapuach. Tapua. Okay? So, the, 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 the correct way to, well, I don't, I don't wanna say the correct way, but one way to ask the question, how does the apple taste? You can say ehk, hatapus, I mean ehk, hatayin, shell, hatapua. Alright? Hatayin. Shell, hatapua.
It was for your, the.
The, yeah. The apple, how taste? How the taste of the apple, how's the taste of the apple? And you could say what? Is there? Tarry, right, it's, it's fresh, is there? Himots, it's sour. Is there matok? It's sweet. Is it my talk? Right? How taste the apple? It's sweet. Is it my talk? Do you think that you could use this here to come up with some questions and answers of your own? Using the same kinda method I use?
Yes, I think so.
Look at this here, some more, uh, some more, um, adjectives, right, qualities. Bad. Is raw, clean, is nakki, dark, afel. Difficult. I've heard that somewhere before. Look at dirty. Melo. Melo. La, melo la. Uh, that's the one, that one, that one deserves a, a look at right there, that looks horrible. He said close to salty?
Wasn't it salty?
Almost, let's see, that's, that's even more interesting now, let's see. See, let's see how we pronounce it. Cause this has a lot of letters in that thing. That's horrible, who would make up a word like that?
That means dirty.
Means dirty, yeah. Le heat, lah lech, le heat, lah lech. Look at that.
The heat, is that for to be dirty or?
Yeah, to be dirty, yeah, that's, uh, that is the infinitive, to become dirty.
To become dirty.
Yes. Heat. Lah lech. Le heat, lah lech. It's a horrible word, that's like atrocious. Crazy. Dark, difficult, dirty, dry, yash, ya, yavesh. Yavesh. How would you say? My leg is dry.
It's leg regal, regaling.
Regal, yeah. Why not? Regal, seli, yavesh. Ah, regal, seli, yavesh, yavessa. Let's see what's wrong with that. Now, of course, we, we, we say all these things, and then, uh, Saran Samaki say, you're not saying it right, right, but we, we run the risk of that. But that's what we want, we want her to see that we're at least saying the words, right, and then. Correct us when we get the grammar wrong, this is, that's what you do to your kid, I mean, I, I teach high schoolers, I correct their grammar all the time. Mister Martin, can I go to the restroom? Not on my floor right there, you can't. May I, right, so we, we correct grammar all the time. Mister Martin, can I go to the restroom? Only if you brought a change of clothes. Uh, empty, rake. Easy, call. Expensive, yahar, fast. Me. Me here. Look at that, foreign. Toes made it in there, look at toes, good. Cashier, did, did we do hard already? Oh, difficult, yeah, we did, kashier. Difficult, and then we have hard, which is kashier again. Inexpensive, zol. Look at that, local, new. Noisy, roish. Old, zakeen. Right, powerful, hezekiah. As if. Correct, slow, look at that, A T, A T. Soft is ref. Very, mild, weak, wet.
What was correct again?
Correct is. Neck home, neck home.
Neck home, neck home.
You heard him say knock home, you know?
Knock home.
But I believe, I believe it is neck home, but we'll, let's see, maybe I got it wrong. Copy, let's go paste it in there, and let's see. Nachon. Nachon, yes, correct. Nachon. I was prepared, look at that, that's different. So it, it also means prepared. Interesting. Weak, less. Wrong. Moté. 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 Lots of cheese, look at this, another word, another adjective, few, little, many. Much, apart, some, a few, and whole. So, I got plenty of adjectives on here, I'm gonna share this document with you all. I have plenty of adjectives on here. That we could. Go through and look at and. Practice words with them, and that's what I do, I just sit there and I just get on Google Translate. And I have a few more resources to, to check, cause you can't trust everything to one resource. And then my, my primary resource is always the scripture, cause that's what I wanna read is the scripture. So, uh, I'll save this as well, um, I wanna make sure we put this on the, uh. And, and, and into a document at least, copy. Put it into a document, so we can, uh. Have it, new. Document. Let's just do it real quick, paste, and we'll call this document. Working with. Adjectives in Hebrew. Alright, and now. What I wanna do now is like I'll put a little insert, I'll insert a table, like so, I will. Take all this, cut. Paste, and then I could put the, uh. Translation in there with it, copy. Paste. And just like that, I've created a document, uh, we're going to align this to the right. And we're going to make this, I hate the Arial font, we're gonna make this Times New Roman. And we're gonna bold it, there we go. Uh, uh, and, and what you can do is, you know, once I send you all this document, is you can just. You can go through there, take all these, these words, and just think about what kind of conversation you would have. You know? What kinda conversation you would have with somebody, within these words, right? Uh, sit up straight, or you know, uh, turn around or something, you know, just think about a conversation you'd have. Uh, he was tall, she is short. A narrow walkway, you know, okay, you could, you could say anything, just as long as you're using those adjectives and, and, and applying them the right way. There's no reason why you couldn't, uh, come up with a lot of different, uh, words or, or sentences with all of these. Nine pages of, uh, of Hebrew adjectives you can use to make sentences. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remember to put this in the chat for you, or I'm gonna leave it open. Um, we have a little bit, uh, I'm gonna show you one more thing, and not, not too much, not too heavy, but I'm gonna show it to you. Uh, and I, I'll add this to the chat as well. Uh, I see it already, I'm just looking at the, uh, star here. It's right here. Parts of the body. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, uh, put too much emphasis on this tonight, cause I know we probably burn out with all the adjectives. Too much to take one time, but just to look at it real quick, you know, ear. Right? And this was when I used to work really hard, cause you see how it says, if it's red, this is how you make a plural. If it's black, this is how you make a plural, so I did a lot of hard work with this in, in, uh. I don't, start working it hard. Each bar. Betan, betan. Knee, derek. Back is right here. Uh, it should be a little smaller, cause it won't fit on there. There you go, like that. Just him, yeah. Throat, garon. Chest, hazeh. Hazeh. Hands, yad. Thigh is yarech. Right? There's your liver. There's your kidney. Shoulder. Khatafim, khatafim is shoulders. Land is, or laid is heart. Jaw is set. Tongue, lashon, to speak. Eyes, eye. Like the same spelling of the letter eye. Bone, it seem. Let's see if we can find blood, there's, a coat Nilo saw blood today. I don't see blood on here.
Oh, let's look it up.
Let me, uh, yeah, we're, we're definitely gonna look it up. Uh, let's see, regal's foot or leg, right there, wrong is his head.
That's the plural.
Yeah? Anim, this face. Anim, this face. Ha, his mouth, it's like the spelling of the letter ha. Surprise, I didn't put blood on here. Okay, so that's a good blood. I'm gonna go to. Uh, this one. I'm gonna open a new tab. I'm gonna exit of that, alright. What is blood in Hebrew?
I have heard.
A dom, right? Yeah, dom. I knew it was something like that, I was thinking it was gonna be, uh, lah, but it was not lah, it's dom. It was a two-letter word. And I like this, I like this, uh, this, this website here, because it gives you some sentences. Sometimes they're way too, way, they're way too advanced, right? Uh, it's still good to see some of the sentences sometimes. Look at this here, uh, rare blood cells, so you have. Bati, bati. Bati, bati, dom, I do mean. Cells of red, cells of blood that are red, I do mean. Pint of blood, yeah. Shell, dom, a pint of blood, four pints of blood. Dom ne shafek, which is, it's a spill. Yeah, so it's, uh, look at this here. Uh, the taste of blood on my tongue, here's, uh, with, im. Tayin, which is taste, with taste, a shell is of. Dom is blood. And then. Let's see if belashoni is tongue. Lashon was, oh, look at that, lashon was to speak or tongue. So lashoni is the tongue that belongs to me. I love, I'm, I'm gonna tell you what that's called for me. To, to me, when I, when I, when I see that and I, and I can recognize these things. Cause this is on a really advanced website, but when I can recognize those things, what it, to me, what it's called is alignment. Things tend to align. And when, when, when things can align for me, and I can get an understanding, I just, I'm proud of myself, so. Here's to alignment. With, im. Tayin, with the taste, shell of dom, blood. Be la shoni, or in my tongue, on my tongue, on the tongue that belongs to me. You can almost write poetry when you know some Hebrew like that. I start feeling real poetic when I, when I can, uh, know some Hebrew phrases, I don't know why. So, um, I think that that is, uh. I think that's pretty much where I wanna end it tonight. Uh, it's, there's a lot here that we could, uh. We could, we could talk about. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share this with you as well, and you'll have parts of the body, and you'll have, uh. Hebrew adjectives, so these three documents I'll share with you sometime this week, let me, tonight if I work on a little bit, and I'll, I'll share with you. But I just wanted to, uh. Wanted to share that, because. In order to start building conversations, you have to know some, you gotta have a repertoire of words, and so. Hopefully from, especially from this one here, hopefully we can start building some conversations, okay? Practice, which is, which is saying people, practice your. Did was. Now, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, so what I did was this. You have all these categories, right? You have colors there, then you have another category, sizes, you have a third category. Which is. Uh, shapes. The fourth category is taste. The fifth category is qualities, the sixth category is. I, I, I have those six categories, I had to print it out, and I, I posted on my wall. Where I could read them, and I would just read through them every day. And I'm telling you, when you, when you have them in your house, on your wall, on your refrigerator, and you're reading through them every day, you're gonna start using them more. If you only look at them once a week when we have class, you'll never use them, and you'll never. Use them, basically, but if you, if you print them out, or if you write them out, and you look at them every day. And you have them somewhere in your house, that's visual. You'll use them every day, and you will start to internalize them. Right, this is how I teach my students how to study, right? Print it out, put it on your walls, put it somewhere where you can see it, put it somewhere where you know you're gonna see it, and start internalizing it, as you see. Okay? That's, that's always a good idea, print it out, put it on your refrigerator, put it in your kitchen, put it in your living room somewhere. Put it on your front door, that you go out of every day, and you say, I'm not gonna leave the house until I say every word one time. You know, because once you start to internal, once you start, once you have it up somewhere where you can see it, where it's in your presence, where it's in your face. They're gonna start using it every day. Alright? Have your, say something and have your husband say, what was, what, what does that mean? Cause now you're, now you're teaching, yeah.
But let me hold you up there, you might wanna take the recording off. He is not even interested, that's part of his problem.
Sometimes people aren't interesting in the baking process, but they show like cake, so. So you just gotta stick with them, how you work with them, you know, this is how it is sometimes. But, you know, just having them somewhere where you can see them every day, it, it kinda holds you accountable. You know, and, and it gives them, it puts them right there in the forefront of your brain, so that you could, uh. Um, start to utilize them, otherwise, you know, you're just coming class every week, and you, and you won't grow as much. You grow a little bit, but you won't grow as much as you can, because you're not using them every day. And, and you see how easy, and Hebrew is not a hard language to learn, really. Uh, especially once we have disseminated it, and we've taken the, the, the fear factor out of it. The shock of the, the letters and, and, and reading backwards. Almost scares most people out of wanting to learn the language, but we're beyond that. Any questions, ladies, from me before we go?
Hello?
Hello, no questions, uh.
Gotta study it.
You gotta study, it's now, we gotta study. My, uh, last, last Monday, I, we couldn't have class. My, uh, my Abba made transition, and so I had to, uh, do his burial rites and everything, so. I wasn't in the, uh, in a position to really do any studying or lessons on that Tuesday, so. We, uh, we will get back to it as long as, uh. As long as, uh, you, you want, you know, every Tuesday. And, uh, we'll just keep going from there. I'll see you all on next Tuesday, or next Sunday, if we're in the other class. I'm gonna lower the arc real quick, and we can, we can dismiss.